And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks for that. In the last time, our last meeting, we had some interruption going on that we had to close the meeting early. And because of that, I didn't get to read my, read my two quotes to end, to end the meeting at the end. So I'm going to start out with a couple of my quotes that I had last time, bring a little levity hopefully to the, to the audience. Uh, the first one is from Mickey Mantle. It says, he who has the fastest golf cart never has a bad lie. And I'm sure anybody who plays golf gets that one. The second one is from Hank Aaron. It said, took me seventeen years to get three thousand hits in baseball. I did it one afternoon on the golf course. So anyway, it's a, our next is the swearing in his testimony. And I, and I want to say, uh, we have lots and lots of great people in Orno. There's amazing how many people we had apply. Uh, after all the different interviews, uh, we had one person who stood out, uh, kind of heads and, heads and, I guess that was a heads and tails, but heads above the rest. Uh, Maria to my right, she grew up in Orno, her kids are going to Orno. Uh, she's a very accomplished business person, building up a restaurant, number of restaurants from scratch, uh, which also brought her lots of experience with city councils and planning commissions with all the things you have to get variance, two of those type of things. Um, so it is my pleasure to swear in our newest council member, Maria Beach. So Maria, let me, uh, let's go down here at the podium. Do you have anything to, to read?
Yeah.
Well, it's already up there.
I'll look.
Okay, raise your right hand. I say your name.
Hi, I'm Maria Beach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the office of city council member.
Of the city of Orno.
Of the city of Orno.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the state of Minnesota.
In the state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Uh, to the best of my judgment and ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I show off your, your quick picture? Do you have the camera?
My husband.
All right, so welcome Maria Beach, newest council member. Okay, well, next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And with the approval of the agenda, we'll also do the consent agenda at the same time. So on one vote, we will approve everything on the consent agenda. Um, and I will go over that before we approve it. So if there's any agenda items anybody wants to talk more about, we can do that as well. Would you like to take a stab at the consent agenda?
Well, there's not much on the agenda. I would make a motion to approve items number two through five on consent.
I'd like to pull number five, please.
Pulling number five, okay. So what we've had on the consent agenda tonight is number two, city council meeting minutes of June twelfth. We had number three, city council work session minutes of June twelfth. We have four claims and bills, excuse me. With number, uh, and number five, we will take off and do right after this real quick. Um, so I have a motion. Does anybody want to take any of those items, two, three, or four off? I see no objections. I have a motion of one out of, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
And on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Note that pass is five zero. And council member Vincent had a question on number five.
Sure. I'd just like to hear more about this because I understand that the intention here is to, um, do away with the work sessions. And I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about how you came to that decision and what the purpose is.
Mary Council, um, really what we're looking at is, uh, so we have eleven meetings throughout the year, four regular meetings and seven work sessions. Uh, over the last two years, I've seen that our work sessions, we've struggled to fill them with content, um, and on a regular or consistent basis. So what we're looking at is canceling the remainder of the work sessions for the year uh, and, and for following years as well. And then scheduling them as needed throughout the year. So this year, we don't have too many projects that we need to discuss. If something comes up, then we would schedule a work session where our commission could be, and there, really that's about it. Uh, Park Commission has worked really hard, they've done a great job. They've got to do a lot of these work sessions and they've tried to discuss certain things and it's been, uh, some contentious at times. So we're just trying to scale back some of these meetings if we don't have to have them.
So you feel like you'll just address those issues in the regular meetings then whatever would have been discussed in work sessions, you can?
Yeah, so what we're looking at is our, we have subcommittees and then we have park assignments for each commissioner. Uh, and we'll have more emphasis on, uh, staff interaction with the council member, or sorry, a commissioner, um, for those, those tasks. And then, uh, we will bring those to the regular meetings and then eventually to city council.
Okay, great, thank you.
You going to make a motion to?
Yes.
Do you have a handbag?
Make a motion to approve, um, number five, um, twenty twenty-three official meetings calendar update.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll stick it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, note that pass is five zero. Okay, we are fortunate to have our, uh, Hennepin County Commissioner, Chris Latondres today. We've got an annual update. And he wore his special Hawaiian shirt first. If we got the memo, we would've worn ours too, so.
Yeah, face, we are close.
You're pretty close.
Yeah, very, very close on Councilmember Beach. Uh, that's a little bit of an inside joke to give these, uh, annual updates for the benefit of your audience. Uh, first time I came in here, I was wearing a full suit and all of you were wearing, uh, blind shirts. I felt a little overdressed, so made it a point, uh, wear a blind shirt for these meetings. Um, anyways, good evening, Mayor Walsh, Council. Uh, it's my esteemed colleagues in local government, uh, thank you for welcoming me here to my annual, uh, Hennepin County update. I believe we sent along a, uh, presentation, something that you had teed up here, but I'll get started while we, uh, while we tee that up. Uh, my name is Chris Latondres, I'm your Hennepin County Commissioner representing District Six, which includes my hometown of Hopkins, Minnetonka, Edina, Eden Prairie, and twelve cities around Lake Minnetonka, including, uh, the city of Orno. Uh, if you might, wouldn't mind going to the next slide here. Uh, when I tell folks I'm, uh, their Hennepin County Commissioner, the most common question I get is, uh, what the heck is a commissioner? And, uh, I, uh, I get it, Hennepin County often flies under the radar screen, but we are actually Minnesota's second largest government by budget, second only to the state, and the largest local unit of government, which of course includes our cities, our, our school districts in Minnesota's eighty-seven counties. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, our board, uh, there are seven of us commissioners, functions much like this council. Together we steward a two-point-seven billion dollar annual budget across a broad range of topics, human services, public health, public safety, uh, public works, uh, resident services, that includes our libraries and our elections. Uh, through our HRA, we also steward considerable investments in housing and economic development. And we do this on behalf of the one-point-two-six million residents who call Hennepin County home, that's, uh, one in five Minnesotans. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, it's a big responsibility, and if there's, uh, one thing that I've learned, uh, serving our shared residents, it's that the only way any of this is possible is through, uh, strong partnerships. So Mayor Walsh, Council, I promise to do my part to ensure that partnership between Hennepin County and the city of Orno remains strong, uh, for years to come. And so tonight, my goal is to offer a brief, uh, snapshot of what your county government has been up to since we last connected, I think around a year ago, on a few key topics, uh, housing, public safety, mental health, and our economic recovery. And I'll make myself available if they answer any of your questions. Uh, so with that, uh, we'll jump in on housing stability, first slide, please. Um, we now face an intersecting crisis of affordable housing and homelessness that has only surged with the sunset of the federal eviction moratorium this past summer and the, uh, the end of emergency rental assistance dollars that Hennepin County administered on behalf of the federal government. Uh, one in three, uh, Hennepin County families are housing cost burdened, that's the information on this slide, uh, which means they pay more than a third of their incomes on their rent or their mortgage. Uh, we have now seen, as we've emerged, uh, from, uh, on the other side of these, uh, the eviction moratorium and these dollars, a doubling of family homelessness over pre-pandemic levels. Our family shelters are operating at two-hundred-and-thirty percent capacity, which is, uh, we've never seen it before in Hennepin County's history. We are having to rebase like some of our assumptions around what that looks like. Um, and that definition of family homelessness is a parent and a child with no place to, uh, to sleep at night. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, we don't have to look very far to understand why. Uh, there are seventy-three thousand extremely low-income households in our county and fewer than fifteen thousand, uh, units available to them. Starting gap of nearly fifty thousand units that directly connects to this surge in homelessness we're seeing. Uh, next slide. Uh, it's why for our part, uh, Hennepin County stewards, uh, over a hundred and six billion dollars annually across a whole continuum of resident housing needs from homeless shelters to affordable homeownership and everything in between. Uh, next slide. Uh, and with the American Rescue Plan, uh, those dollars we received, we've also gone big on housing stability. Uh, ninety-six million dollars of our, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-six million dollars we've invested on housing. Uh, it's garnered to national attention, including from, uh, U.S. Housing Urban Sec, uh, Urban Development Secretary Marshall Fudge, who had a recent, uh, meeting, uh, with me and a couple of my commissioner colleagues in Washington, D.C., not only increasing the scale of Hennepin's, uh, investments, but also some of our innovations, uh, converting hotels into single-room occupancies. And the V-Bolt Village, which is the first indoor tiny home village anywhere in the country that directly facilitates some of those exits from homelessness. Uh, there's a lot more work, uh, that we need to do, uh, that you can be proud to live in a county that's where we look to as a national leader in housing. Uh, next slide. Uh, just, uh, quickly before we move on, just wanted to spotlight, uh, a few of the ways that these dollars are going to use right here at District Six. I don't believe there's any, uh, projects in this cycle in Orno, uh, but our office is here to field questions and make connections with any developers you may know who operate in this space or interested in learning more about these grant opportunities. Uh, next slide. Our next topic tonight is public safety. Uh, I'm the vice chair of Hennepin's, uh, Hennepin County's Public Safety Committee, our Law Safety and Justice Committee, and it remains a top priority of mine. Uh, I'm in frequent conversation, uh, with our chiefs, uh, Chief Barniac, nice to see you, uh, our new sheriff, uh, Delana Witt, and I continue to listen and learn from our officers and first responders, uh, on the front lines through regular, regular milestones. In fact, then just this October, I was with, uh, Sergeant Hennessy? Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we had a nice time together in, in October. Uh, with a workforce, uh, shortage that is affecting all of our departments and increased, uh, pressure, pressures to serve residents with mental and behavioral health challenges, uh, it's critical that we get these public servants the resources and support that they need to do their jobs with fidelity and excellence. Uh, it's why for our part, uh, we approved the Sheriff Office new request for thirty-one, uh, new FTEs, uh, new deputies, uh, we're still, uh, looking to fill those, uh, we are subject to a lot of those same workforce pressures. Uh, it's also why we approved eight-point-two million, uh, Hennepin is sort of the lead, uh, partner on expanding the North Metro Public Safety Training Facility in Maple Grove, uh, which recently officially opened for business. I think we're doing a ribbon cutting, uh, at this summer, but that's now open and operational. Uh, next slide. Uh, it's also why we moved with urgency to expand, uh, what I believe is one of the most promising public safety, uh, partnerships and initiatives anywhere in our nation, our embedded social worker partnership with local law enforcement. It only happens as a partnership, um, between Hennepin County and our local departments, uh, including, uh, the city of Orno. Uh, what started as a pilot in two thousand nineteen with five social workers in six departments has now expanded, uh, this year to forty-five workers covering every city and department in Hennepin County, uh, including the Orno Police Department. Uh, it's a, a model, and we've got data to back this up, that, uh, better meets the needs of our residents in crisis, uh, frees up our police to do critical police work, uh, and it makes all of us, uh, more safe. And I believe that's a perfect model of good government in action. Uh, next slide. Uh, while we're on this sort of adjacent, uh, topic of rising behavioral, uh, mental health, uh, needs, uh, Hennepin County, uh, also is a really important system partner, uh, system partner in addressing, uh, mental and behavioral health needs of residents more broadly. Uh, we, uh, facilitate a wide array of services in this domain, uh, to help, uh, both, uh, amplify from all these, uh, services, but also help reduce, uh, stigma for residents that might be experiencing, uh, experiencing a mental health issue. We've recently launched this, uh, See Mental Health, uh, campaign. You may have seen it on billboards, you may have seen it on your mobile phone. Uh, if you click on that link, uh, helps residents, uh, build with services, uh, and opportunities they have to interface. I think we've had over seventy billion impressions since we launched this campaign this past year. Uh, next slide, please. I'm also proud to report we're making, uh, great strides in specifically addressing the mental health needs of our students. Uh, according to the CDC, more than four in ten students feel persistently sad or hopeless, and one in three experience poor mental health. Uh, it's a painful trend that's only gotten worse, uh, by some measures, it's tripled, uh, since, uh, the, uh, the end of the pandemic. Uh, through Hennepin County's school-based mental health partnerships, uh, we're now providing services to over six thousand students annually, and then as of this year, two thousand twenty-three, um, I'm, uh, excited to report that we've expanded these, uh, services in this partnership to every single school district, every single eligible school countywide. It's a key, uh, county priority that I've, uh, championed and our board has supported. I just, uh, observed it in the midst of this, uh, crisis of loneliness and social, uh, disconnection. Uh, in fact, uh, the, uh, the Surgeon General, uh, recently released a port, uh, a report on, uh, social disconnection and loneliness. It's a public health crisis, it's possible to quantify that. Uh, our students and our young people, uh, need to know that somebody cares about them. And so I'm grateful for the partnerships, uh, in this case with our schools, uh, to make those investments possible. Uh, third, uh, fourth and final spotlight, uh, next slide, please. A, uh, full economic recovery means supporting our small businesses, uh, which are the backbone of our community. Uh, during the pandemic, Hennepin County, uh, directly, uh, invested over seventy million of our pandemic assistance dollars in grants to small businesses, including over nine-point-five million of those, uh, those seventy million right here in District Six, and I believe about a quarter million, uh, in Orno, and quite a bit around, uh, the lake. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, but we know our responsibility doesn't end, uh, here. Uh, that's why we've launched Elevate Hennepin. It's a resource hub connecting local entrepreneurs to expert advisors at, uh, no cost on a wide range of topics that you can see up here on this, uh, this slide. Uh, and folks can, uh, go to elevate, uh, hennepin.org to learn more about, uh, that array of programming. Next slide. Uh, it's just one piece of a broader strategy that, uh, Hennepin County is growing to support entrepreneurs and businesses at every stage of their, uh, development, including through a range of additional programs that you can see, uh, offered here. And today, over twenty-three hundred, uh, businesses engaged, uh, in a variety of, uh, services you see underneath this, uh, Elevate Hennepin, Hennepin umbrella, um, accessing over ninety-five hundred hours of free, uh, uh, one-on-one advising. Uh, we also have, uh, CEO cohort groups for businesses over a, a certain size. Uh, so whether you've got a new idea, that you're looking to establish a business around, or you're a larger business that might even be trying to learn from peers on how you facilitate an exit, um, we're here to, uh, to help at every stage. Uh, next slide. Finally here, uh, just before turning things back over to you, uh, Mayor Walsh, for your reference, our public works team, uh, wanted me to include a list of current and future projects, uh, here around the lake, and I, I won't go through all of these, uh, tonight, and I'll just, uh, say I'm also not an expert on these, but if you want, uh, some additional information on any of those, uh, we're happy to facilitate those connections, and I just want to extend my, uh, gratitude to the partnerships, uh, with your public works team that, uh, makes, uh, these investments, uh, move forward. So with that, Mayor Walsh.
We have, we have a lot of county roads here, so we appreciate you keeping them up to the Orno standard that we keep our own roads up to, so I appreciate them, but, but obviously, especially the expensive ones like the bridges and that kind of stuff. Obviously, another important one that's, that you guys do a great job with is, uh, helping continue in funding with the, uh, Hennepin County Water Patrol, uh, which is a big deal for us. And I know we've got the, uh, Richie Anderson, who's our local CDR, uh, with a few other people have raised some money to build a, two dedicated, uh, Hennepin County Sheriff's out here too, which is a big deal. So when they get called off, people don't realize that there's only so many water patrol, and if there's an emergency at some other lakes, they all can be called out and there's nobody here.
That's correct.
And so we have raised our, uh, community has raised a lot of money to have two dedicated people here, which is a big deal, but just having them in general is, is awesome. So I think we've afforded, we've, we've had a good partnership working on all these things too, and kind of looking forward to more of those in the future, and we've done a lot of Hennepin County grants as well, and so I know we've had a lot of interaction with Adam and our, our city administrator on that as well. So we appreciate all the help and working and everything in our community, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Walsh, and, uh, yeah, that partnership with the water patrol is a, is a, is a special one. Um, yeah, a lot, a lot of folks don't know, uh, how this functions, but basically anywhere there's water in Hennepin County, and you think about the two biggest, uh, bodies being the Mississippi River and, uh, Lake Minnetonka, um, there's usually a Hennepin County Patrol out there, uh, especially out here on Lake Minnetonka. But as you say, uh, Mayor Walsh, uh, there's an incident somewhere, they can, uh, get called or deployed. Also swimming pools, uh, interestingly, uh, that counts as.
Anything water related.
That, that counts as water in Hennepin County, so, uh, any other, uh, questions, comments?
And any thoughts from the council here?
Uh, just a couple of questions. First of all, thanks for coming.
Yeah, that's council member.
I was, uh, you know, you hear the term, uh, affordable housing used a lot. Uh, and I think there's a misconception of what it means, you know, what? Can you help explain what the definition of affordable housing is, as you're using in your statistics there?
Yeah, absolutely. So, uh, the, the, the starting point would just be to say that regardless of a resident's income level, from higher income to very low income and below the poverty line, um, typically we consider somebody spending more than a third of their income as housing cost burdened, uh, so by extension, you want a wide array, a wide array of, uh, housing options that are affordable to people at every level, uh, at a third of their income. So that's how we structure that in terms of that housing continuum I, I showed you, is we sort of have it in tiers around, uh, area median income or AMI. Uh, so when you talk about workforce housing, you're usually talking about housing at the sixty, the third, uh, sixty to eighty percent AMI, and that would be that somebody who's at sixty to eighty percent of the area median income, would be able to afford to live here and not be paying more than a third of their income on their rent or their mortgage. And as you move down, um, you know, we stand, we have a ten-year, um, strategy to build a thousand of units of deeply affordable and supportive housing. This is housing that has to be affordable to a household at a thirty percent AMI and below. Oftentimes, those are residents, uh, that are navigating, uh, you know, some pretty significant, uh, life upheaval situations, and we like to provide services for them as well to help get them back on their feet. These are the units that we stand up that are designed to directly facilitate exits from homelessness, so folks can stay in that housing for as long as they need as they, uh, move back up from these safety nets into what I like to call opportunity ladders with the, into the rest of their lives.
So, so when these, the, your numbers there, that was kind of taken, you said Hennepin County, it's taking, you break it down by region?
Uh, well, and, I mean, there's, you could slice it however you want for the purposes of this presentation. I sliced it, uh, based on Minnesota's largest county, which is how we look at it, because that's how we're, we're making these interventions, but.
Yeah, all right, thanks for that. And then, um, I sit on, the police commission was on it, um, you know, so I got to hear firsthand, uh, with the embedded social worker, um, when it was a pilot program, and could you just speak to what kind of funding's available and how long, uh, is that extended? And then what contribution is kind of expected out of each, uh?
Yeah, absolutely. I can show a little bit more light on that. It's, uh, you know, emphasis on the word partnership there, because it really is a partnership, um, starting with the, the funding, um, it's a sixty-fourty, uh, split between the county and, uh, local, uh, law enforcement. I think in the case out here, there's, uh, there's sort of a coalition or alliance of a few different, uh, labor, uh, police departments.
And it's like, fight.
Yep, and the, I believe, yep, and the social worker is, uh, I think technically office of the South Lake, uh, Department, but provides services around, around the lake. Um, but it really, I mean, it embeds the, the way the, um, the workforce side of it works is it's a Hennepin County social worker, they're on our payroll, um, that's important, um, for workforce reasons, but also for data practices regions, you know? Um, there's a lot of challenges, uh, for privacy reasons, sharing, uh, you know, a resident's data between different jurisdictions. But when you've got a Hennepin County social worker that's entitled, entitled to the human services data, sometimes entitled to some of the, um, criminal justice data, there's, there's some of those things happening, um, it, it allows for much more of a seamless, uh, handoff. So what we've, what we've seen in a lot of jurisdictions where, where this, uh, has been now operated for a few years is as much as an eighty percent reduction in repeat calls to nine-one-one among those residents that are, might be considered the frequent flyer model, uh, not to pick on anyone, if there's a Mr. Anderson in the room, but you know, when Mr. Anderson is now called, um, nine-one-one for the tenth time this week, and that requires a police response, Mr. Anderson probably needs something more than a, you know, an, an officer showing up to provide assistance, what that really is, is a call for help and a need for other types of resources, so.
Well, it's a good program, I know it's, uh, it's effective, and our department appreciates having you there. Thank you. And has the social worker ascertained that the scene is safe?
Well, so in, in, in this particular model, it is not an alternative response, so we're not sending, you know, if nine-one-one is called, we're not sending a social worker out as an alternative to a police response. It's also, I mean, you're starting to see a little bit of a hybrid emerge with some of these partnerships where the partnership between the social worker and the police department's really strong, um, but it's also not generally a co-response, right, where you'd have a police officer go, and then you'd also have the social worker go, although that happens on, on occasion if the officers have made an determination that it's safe. What it's mostly is a follow-up. It's, oh my goodness, there's a situation here with a resident, and we really need to get them connected to a different type of service. I responded to a call in Edina, uh, where there was a, a woman that had fallen in her apartment, broken her hip, she was a senior citizen, uh, but when we got to the apartment, it was also just a mess. There was, it hadn't been cleaned properly in years, there was no food in the cupboard or pantries, um, or refrigerator, and it was, and she had never been connected to services before, and she was going to go to the emergency room, um, there was a universe where her apartment could have gotten sort of, uh, public health involved and gotten seized, and then she would have been homeless. Uh, instead, we were able to connect her with a social worker who's able to get her connected to rent assistance dollars and, you know, connected to federal benefits that she might be entitled to around, uh, food assistance. So you turn a situation around for a resident like that, and hopefully that resident's not calling, you know, police ten times a week.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that subject. Do you find that the other communities that this social worker is shared with are finding that they could use more, or is this?
Yes, there's kind of great demand for these services as evidenced by its growth. And I think that's one of the things, um, you know, I'm specifically interested in, you know, Hennepin County, we're able to get a, we're able to scale this because, uh, we're actually able to rely on, um, Medicaid reimbursement, uh, based on caseload, uh, to pay for our portion of it. So I'm in conversation with Congressman Phillips and, and, and other federal partners to try to see, and, would, would there be a way for us to figure out, um, as this grows? Because, you know, Hennepin's not the only jurisdiction in the country doing things like this, how we might provide a little bit more assistance to cities to help make sure that the scales, um, even for, you know, gen- generally when I'm out in Washington or in, uh, St. Paul advocating for, for dollars or, uh, policy shift, I'm advocating for Hennepin dollars. This is one of those areas where I'm like, well, if we're going to grow this partnership, we really need to, uh, grow the pie for everyone.
Thank you.
All right, well, thanks for coming.
Yes.
Before this meeting in twelve months?
No. Not before.
Not before, exactly, thanks. All right, next on our, uh, items is the fire department report, uh, which is number seven, and it really isn't an authori-, it really isn't an authorization, it's probably the wrong word, it's really more of an update on our development specs and obtaining quotes for the rescue pump, brush medical response utility and tender taker. Chief Allen?
Absolutely, Mr. Allen, thank you, yes. Uh, the purpose of this action is to inform council, uh, on staff's plans for procurement and process of fire equipment necessary to provide services to the Navarre service area. Uh, the Orno needs assessment, uh, was accepted on the June twelfth council meeting. In that needs assessment, staff recommended that the city of Orno front up rescue pumper, brush medical slash utility response, and a tanker or tender at each fire station. On the June twelfth meeting, council directed the new department to be ready to provide service to the Navarre area in July of twenty-four, and the rest of the city, um, by the end of the contract. So the table below kind of describes that plan. Uh, so first, the rescue pumper, step one would be to try and coordinate access to engine twenty-one with one lake. Uh, the engine was purchased solely by the city of Orno in two thousand and three to The engine was purchased solely by the city of Orno in two thousand and three to serve the Navarre area. Once a replacement is secured, it can be used as a backup pumper, which would be good to do. Step two would be to solicit proposals for a new or slightly used rescue pumper. The lead time on the apparatuses has been arranged anywhere from twenty-four to thirty-six months, and then upwards of costs of, you know, between five hundred thousand and a million dollars. The brush medical response utility will solicit new proposals for that vehicle. Based on the vehicle use, staff does not recommend a used vehicle for this role. This roles on all of our medicals, many of our calls. As we did a study on, when I was with Long Lake, that particular piece of apparatus fulfills as any apparatus out there. The tanker tender, step one would try and be coordinated of buyouts of one or two of the existing tankers, one of the two existing tankers from Long Lake. Step two, if we're unsuccessful with that, would be to solicit proposals for a new or slightly used tanker truck or tanker truck. The funding for these would be coming through the fire equipment fund. Some of the new equipment, there's the possibility that we could purchase those in a five-year payment plan to try and kind of level up those payments rather than being able to a million dollars this year and nothing the next one. I recommend that staff engage the city of Long Lake's staff for the purchase of one of the two tenders we currently joint own with the Dyna and Long Lake, as well as the disposition for engine twenty-one. I will work concurrently with vendors to develop the cost effective specification, quotes for a rescue pumper, brush medical truck, container and tender. Once those quotes are received, I will bring them right to council and present to council for a little more detail.
Awesome. Thanks for that update. Any questions for the chief over here?
Yeah, I do have some questions. First of all, well, your step one on both rescue pumper and tanker tender involves coordination of Long Lake. You're going to try that first, in other words?
Correct, yes. At the last fire advisory board meeting, they did talk about engine twenty-one being retired early next year because they obtained the purchase of Excelsior's used engine that should become available to them. So hopefully that works out. And then the tanker tender will have to sit down and try and have conversations, add myself with that one.
I'm just considering the reality of that, given the current situation, litigation pending. Is that really an option? It's, you're going to try?
That would be, absolutely, we're going to try.
Okay, so I had a question on the rescue pumper. I understand we have one at station two. The pumping capacity's been disabled, cannot be repaired. Is there a reason this vehicle can't be repaired?
I have no idea what you're talking about. That sounds like a problem for Long Lake and Long Lake Fire. If, if we have a downed engine, that's, that's the first news I've ever heard, so.
Why do you believe it's down?
I'm sorry?
Why do you believe it's, it's down?
That's what I understand in talking to those. So if it's not, I'm just wondering if a truck like that couldn't be repaired?
What, what piece are you specifically speaking about?
Rescue pumper.
What number?
Two. I don't know the number. I think there's only one there.
I guess I, I don't know what's wrong with it, so I can't answer the question if it's, can be repaired or not. So I'm sorry.
So you're looking to purchase either used or new equipment? And how soon would you be coming back to council for these?
It depends on how fast we can obtain quotes and develop the specs with the vendors, so. We've been working on developing the specs for the last couple of months here. We're waiting on some quotes back. You know, and then we'll bring those back to council for approval.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd love to talk online to find out what problems they're having with that piece of apparatus and figure out which one it is. If they've got a downed engine, that's, that's a major problem.
No, I don't think, I think it's something that perhaps isn't being utilized at this time. I'm just trying to get a handle on the idea of buying new equipment, which is very expensive. So anyway, we can talk about that.
Absolutely. Expensive equipment that lasts, you know, twenty to twenty-five years.
Yeah, I understand. And I know, I know that brush medicals are very important. Long Lake purchased a new one recently. Was that a capital expenditure that was talked about recently with Long Lake in our contract? Of providing assistance with that purchase?
It was discussed last year, yes, and then when we came back, it was determined that we needed to jump on the two towns first. And so that's what we did, and then I never brought it back because that was, that was the end of the year and I was, you know, hired.
How many times in the past was a brush medical discussed to Long Lake? Supporting anyone, I mean, because I know it's older.
Excuse me, what?
Supporting the purchase of a new one, because I know this one's old. You don't know how many times we talked about supporting that capital expenditure in the past?
I know, I'm sorry, sorry.
I don't believe this. Thanks.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thanks chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next council meeting is very important. All right, that'll bring us to our finance report.
Thank you, Mayor. The only update I have is more on technology. Just an update you will, tomorrow morning, security and sound will be here. And among other things, they'll be running some cabling and some electrical. And next time you're in here for a meeting, we should have the TV monitor up there so you'll be able to see what's, what's being broadcast. And I believe we should have a light that will tell you when the lights are on. Slow but sure, but it's, we're moving on.
And the technology, we're getting the fiber and all that kind of stuff, it's-
The fiber?
The new, uh-
New Public Works building?
No, the new stuff in here.
Oh, new stuff in here? Yes, that'll probably not happen until towards the end of September.
Oh, okay.
There's a back order, a delay on the company that is installing that. I don't know if it's the equipment or their schedule, but it'll be September.
But it's a delay with back orders, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and any questions for finance? All right, thanks, Ron. City attorney report, sort of.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have an item, but it's under the closed session, so I'll wait till that's-
Do we have anybody from community development here that stayed around that has an update? Or Josh, you have any update on parks? Since I got you here? Sure. Get you some FaceTime?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, park staff, they're, they're staying busy this year. We just finished cutting down the rest of the trees over at Hackberry Park after the demo of the house. So that park is really starting to open up. Adam and I will be meeting with our subcommittee, our park commission subcommittee for Hackberry this Wednesday, discussing the master plan, so looking forward to providing some updates in the future. Golf course is, it's busy. So today was our very first food truck event at the golf course.
How'd that go?
That was, that went really well, so we had a lot of staff show up around lunchtime. And then we have two different leagues tonight that are taking advantage of it. So excited to see that happening and hopefully goes well, and we'll see it back. We're planning maybe every other week, depending on how it goes.
I would think that that would go well.
Yeah, yeah.
And I did notice Hackberry looks really different without the fence and the house. And it's all graded, so it's all kind of, the dirt's been put back in. It looks, looks great. So now as moving forward, we can revitalize that park for the first time.
Yeah, we're excited. So, yeah, staff, they're, they're doing a great job though. We've got a great team this year, both in the parks and at the golf course. So really happy with where we're at.
Awesome. Any questions for, for Josh? All right, thanks. All right, that'll bring us to our city administrative engineer report, and we have our next work session draft.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On the draft next work session, I, I had the recommendation to cancel it because we did not have an item for the next meeting. However, our cannabis discussions today will cut a little bit short. So if, if the attorney can be ready and you would like that, I would change my recommendation to adding that to the agenda for the work session on the tenth of July.
Is it in the next one somewhere?
Is that July?
Ten, ten.
Yeah, that's, that works.
Do we need an hour, or do you think you can, you had a half an hour, or? Probably not, we'll be safe.
I think an hour can be counted.
Okay, well, let's just, everybody will get on the cannabis discussion in general on there for the next work session.
Okay, do we need a motion to add that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to, I think cannabis can remove the THC.
Sure, yeah, we can change the title.
We learned it's not being called THC to cannabis. It's a cannabis discussion on, on, or July ten, a work session starting at five o'clock.
Second. Hey, Long Bear, say hi.
Hi.
You know, that pass is five zero. Any other update from city administrative?
Uh, just a couple of engineering updates. One, the new Public Works facility is proceeding. You may notice the very large crane that is finishing in putting the wall panels in. Right after the holiday, the next major item start there, which is putting in the roofing joints, as they continue to work to seal that building in. So that is currently progressing on schedule, so that is good news. We have had our pre-construction conference for the parking lots, which is the Navarre Community Parking Lot and the Golf Course Upper Parking Lot. Both of the, the Navarre Parking Lot due to start in mid-July. And then the Golf Course Parking Lot will be a couple of days work in September. Late August or later sometime.
How are the other orders coming together with Navarre Parking Lot?
Uh, we've reached out to everybody via mail. We have had several phone calls, the owner, manager of the Narrows. So they're looking at doing some paving at the same time, so we'll be coordinating that. They're going to contract correctly with the same contractor that we have, and so that hopefully makes some move there.
They'll all do it too.
Is the Orno Golf Course lot going to be striped?
It will be, yes.
Have you a new one?
Yes, yes. That, that has been a point of contention. Some, there's advocates who wanted to stay unstriped, and then there's a group who wanted striped, but we're going to try, we're going to try as we prepare the whole thing to get it striped and see if we can bring a little bit of order to the chaos that sometimes is that parking lot. The, let's see, the other update I had, oh, is the, the cured in place pipeline project, which every year, for new members, you know, every year we spend about a quarter of a million dollars trying to retrofit our sewer lines by doing linings inside of our old clay pipes. So that project is due to start, actually, it will start flushing it this week, and then be doing the actual lining in early July. All those pipes for this year are down on the Casco Point in that area. And that should, when we're done with that, that should have retrofitted all, all the mains or pipes we have down there. So a lot of things will start to, to take off. The only thing that I don't have good dates on yet is our road projects. So still waiting to get the pre-construction conference done for Fox Street. And then I know Medina, who's leading our town line road project, is getting ready. We're going to have an open house in a few weeks, but I don't have exact times from them yet either, so. Those are the main events.
All right, any questions for Adam? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that'll bring us to our public comments section, which is limited to three minutes per person. We did make a minor change on here, which I'll get to. It's an opportunity for the public to address the council. The council will not engage in discussion or take action on items presented at this time. However, the council may refer issues to staff or follow up a consideration at a future meeting. Speakers should state their name and home address at the podium for speaking. The council will first open the podium for city of Orno residents. So if you can raise your hand, I'll call on you to come up. Once we're done and Orno residents have been completed, they're talking, then we'll open it up to the members of the public who would suggest the council. And if they could raise their hand, I'll call them up as well. So Adam is our gatekeeper for the time. The gatekeeper puts a right up there on the thing, so you can kind of watch it right up there. So as many Orno residents, yes, ma'am?
Thank you. My name is Kathy Sutman. I'm at four seven five Denver Drive. And I'm speaking again this evening to protest what I've seen in terms of the process and the conduct that takes place at these meetings. I've seen abuse of power and other many examples. I'm only going to touch on a couple. February first meeting I attended, I saw the mayor engage in uninterrupted fifteen-minute rant berating another council member. For months, our pleas from numerous citizens for a meeting with a fulsome discussion to consider all aspects of fire services have been ignored. The meeting of five twenty-two was not adequate. Other member matters have been similarly dismissed. There was an argument last, two weeks ago. The mayor was elected, let him do his job, and of course, I agree, the mayor was elected. But I disagree that he's doing his job. Here's my take, just my view. This mayor is gaslighting us. He manipulates us using counter narratives. There are made up stories popping up here and there, denial of facts, discrediting and silencing people who don't agree. And we had some of that yet again this evening. An open discussion survey is not of interest because our opinions don't matter. The goal of the gaslighter is to obtain power and control by others, over others, by creating chaos, conflict and confusion. So I want to say something to the firefighters and their families. And thank you for having sacrificed so much to keep us safe in our communities. And there isn't any way, and thank you for giving up what you've given up. And I know it's not just the firefighters, it's the families as well. My husband and I have lived here since nineteen eighty-five. I, we have never heard any complaints about response times or quality of service. And we've had many episodes where we've directly dealt with the firefighters, and they've done a great job. To the angry folks who are here, we've got to be placing a loud exclamation point at the end of each meeting. I don't disbelieve that you have issues and grievance with the council. However, I plead with you. Yelling, obscene language and personal attacks will not solve your problems, and it will not garner empathy from your fellow citizens. It in fact makes some of the council members' behavior look better by comparison. So if you need to raise a concern, please do, but name the issue, avoid name-calling, yelling and obscene language. To the citizens of Orno, I ask you to pay attention to what is happening here. Restoring a healthy democracy in our small city requires all of us citizens with a wide diversity of opinions and perspectives to problem solve together, to listen to each other, reclaim our shared power. Democracy is not a spectator sport, and there's an election next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agent Hennepin, yes, ma'am, right in front here.
Kim Carswell, two sixty months in the place. My comments are a response to the last council meeting on June twelfth. By suppressing council member discussion, the Orno City Council is not following best practices for fair and impartial decision-making. It is important for Orno citizens to hear all the council members' viewpoints, so shutting down Elisa Benson's discussion in her last meeting was an insult to the Orno majority that elected her in twenty twenty-two. She represents the most recent voter's choice, and those voters deserve to hear her point of view. This type of behavior that occurred is a new load from my experience with the Orno City Government, because the meetings are being run like there's an autocracy here. Let me read a few points from the mayor's, Minnesota mayor's handbook. Presiding officers should not dominate discussion. In most cities, the mayor participates equally in council meetings. Generally, the mayor has the same right as any other council member to discuss issues, make second motions and vote. Since the mayor is also the presiding officer of meetings, this can create a difficult situation on issues where the mayor may have strong views. In recognition for this dual role as participant and meeting facilitator, mayors may choose to limit their comments or save their comments until all other members have had a chance to voice their views. Presiding officers should also allow participants to speak and present their views. The role of the presiding officer is to facilitate the discussion. Mayors should not use this authority to silence political opponents or suppress views with which the mayor does not agree. Also, I would say to the council, if the mayor is not going to have to form, it's up to you to step in and show the citizens you care about conducting a respectful meeting and bringing all voices back to Orno. This ongoing suppression of the citizens and now the suppression, suppressum, suppressum of a popularly, popularly elected council member has gone too far. In closing, the council is following legal procedures, but is not following the best practices for a healthy, respected and vibrant council. Elisa won the most votes in the last election. This is her base of support. It is not just the people like me and others that show up at the meetings. Watching her being suppressed by the current mayor and other council members is not sustainable or a winning strategy for Orno. It's citizens or the council. Next year is an election year, and three of our council members are up at the end of their terms. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Crosby and Miss Peach, let us seem like collaborative and respectful citizens when we enter that voting booth. Thank you.
And I have a copy to put in there. Thanks.
Kenny Seiki, twenty-eight seventy-four Casco Point Road. And my question is, I, this last lawsuit, I understand that's number six for the year, is that right? For Orno, since last August, or July or August?
I would have to double check that, I'm not sure.
Are you the defense every time we're sued? Are you the defense every time we're sued?
No.
So we hire other firms?
They're covered by insurance.
Orno Insurance? Okay, so how many suits do we budget here?
I don't do the budgeting, I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, there's got to be a fund that pays for, well, the insurance. And I would imagine that's going up because we keep getting sued. And now we're being sued by another city for services about a fire contract that wasn't discussed. So I think there's got to be some liability here with the council too, because when you, when you take your pledge, you're taking it all with other person. But you're not taking, when you step on the council, you're still a person, you're still an individual acting for the city. And whether or not, here it is, my speech. But acting for the citizens doesn't take away liability for your actions. And so I hope that you realize that when we get our new fire department, if things don't go just like crackers like it goes right now, and if the response times are less, and something happens where someone is hurt or killed, I think you need to realize that your actions now are not just for Orno. There is individuals. You, just because you sit on the council doesn't take away your liability and your responsibility as a person, the one who takes that role. Just to remind you, okay?
Is there anybody else from Orno tonight who'd like to speak? I see none, I'll open up the general public. Is there anybody else from the general public who would like to speak tonight?
My name is.
Good evening. My name is Callie Grady. I'm a Long Lake resident. I am also a fire wife. I have a two-seven-one green lane in. I just wanted to come up, and I'm going to continue to address council as I can throughout the ongoing fire negotiations. I guess it's not really a word anymore, but problem-solving that our two cities are engaged in. And I was disappointed at the last council meeting to learn that the Long Lake firefighters submitted a letter to the council and was not allowed to read that to in front of the public. So I have an excerpt here from them. It says, "Because of the recently accepted plans by the city of Orno to prematurely annex Station Two and its call area, which goes directly against our request." Our request being the Long Lake Volunteer Firefighter Relief Association. "We feel it is important to repeat our strongly encouraged recommendation to keep, to both cities, to keep this department whole. It simply does not benefit our community to dismantle this operationally successful fire department and in turn to create two superfluous departments with uncertain futures. Members of the Long Lake Fire Department are citizens of our collective community who serve our collective community and want the opportunity to continue to do so as one department for decades to come. It's been my personal stance that I'm not the person who should be deciding what course of action should happen, but to question how we come to those decisions and to challenge the cities to stay together, because I know and you all know that it has been a very successful department. Because of that, I'd like to ask each council, and I will at both meetings, ask each of them, what steps are you taking to keep this crew together as per their request? What are you doing to ensure those that want to continue to serve can do so in a similar capacity? What are you doing to allow each firefighter to maintain their years of service and the benefits that they have earned in service to this community? Are you going to ensure that their pensions are made whole? And will their training and certifications be maintained? Lastly, as part of their statement, they said, as a demonstration, as part of the Long Lake Firefighters Relief Association statement, their final request was, "As a demonstration of your stated support of the dedicated and proud firefighters who serve your community, we ask that you do everything in your power to find a mutually beneficial path forward for shared fire services." And I just would really like for the firefighters to be heard, because as I've heard many people refer to, and people on this council, including Councilwoman Beach, this is an ugly divorce, and it's affecting our crew in negative ways. And they continue to serve us bravely and heroically, and I appreciate them for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the general public? Come on up.
Brad Erickson, twenty-four eighty-five Independence Road. I spoke with Mr. Maddock last week about, well, first I'll apologize for my part in the mayhem last week. I figured that you guys being such defenders of the Constitution would be more about, you know, the First Amendment than you've proven to be. But in any case, I spoke with Mr. Maddock after the meeting, and there is no requirement to live in this city, to speak in this city. I'll also add that I had no hands of dollars in investment in this city, and I was paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in taxes in this city when this issue came about. So I don't know what city you would want me to go complain to, but my issues are with you and with you now. So that's why I'm here. So maybe we could clear that up. Demi the divider. You were dividing us during the pandemic. You were dividing us during George Floyd. You divided us during the election cycles. And you divided us with Long Lake. And now you're trying to divide up Long Lake? Quite a legacy. That was my issue all along. What were you doing? I knew the second I saw that video that you sent me what you were up to. And I knew there was more. I had no idea it would lead to the Capitol steps on January sixth with Mr. Crosby. I had no idea it would lead to, don't shake your head, no. Because guess what? My lawsuit is finished. It will be number seven this year for Penningsey. It is number six currently, and number seven will be filed maybe tomorrow. And you will need to answer all those questions. All the stuff that you say are lies are in the lawsuit, and it includes you now, Mr. Crosby the second. So hopefully you've got your answers ready. You've had over a year to prepare them. Remember, I offered you guys a chance, and you didn't take it. Right? And I warned you guys that this is what we would do. And here I am, a year later. You think I'm going away? I'm not going away. So you guys decide how you want to handle it. I would have taken Ms. Benson's advice with the, with the League of Cities, the mediation. But that's just me. You know, I'd want to talk about this stuff behind closed doors. But if you want to do it publicly, that's great. It'll be on a permanent record as soon as this is served and filed. So that'll be forthcoming. Thank you.
Anybody else from the general public that would like to come up?
Chelsea Weetrick, here are my address. I would also like to apologize, if you think that's funny, you're a funny man, for my involvement in the mayhem. But had I not been interrupted, which you're not supposed to do, there wouldn't have been so much mayhem. So, Mr. Walsh, you like to tell people to stay offline and don't participate online. However, you're online. Why is that a wonder? You're very bold online too. But when you're in person, you're just a weak little man. You can't answer any questions. You won't do a mediation, because why? The answers are so obvious. You say, clearly, they're not obvious, because we're all wondering. The public is wondering. You don't like everything that's going on with the craziness of the meetings? Then deal with it. Man up and deal with it. Same with you, Mr. Bean. Grow up, figure it out. Quit making problems for everybody. It's not about you, it's not about you, but you make it about yourselves. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the general public that would like to come up today? I see none, I will close the public comments and we'll go to the mayor councilor. I think there's young lady. Oh, sorry, did Lady Hans come up?
Yeah, sorry. This is a little late on the trigger there. My name is Helen Landreger. I live at twenty-five seventy-third Red Lane, and I'm an Orno resident. I've attended the last several meetings, especially regarding the fire issue that has been before you before quite a while. And my request is very simple. And I hope that it is acted upon by the council and by the staff, because that is one of the things that you offer up, because you will not respond to public comment during these meetings, which I completely understand. But I would like the requests that all of us have made over the last several meetings for a clearly articulated reason why an Orno fire department must exist. I have not received any clear indication of that. I do know that my taxes will be going up at least twenty percent in the next year. And I would like some sort of accounting for that. So if you would please take my request, come up with some clearly articulated reason why this is required. We have very intelligent voter base here in Orno. Logic appeals. We would like clear understanding of what it is that requires us to set up a separate fire department, where you actually compare apples to apples, response time to response time. Not no fight, you know, no lights response time to a lights response time. I just want some clear indication. Thank you.
Thank you. If anybody else from Orno or the general public? If you see none, I will close that and bring into our mayor council record. And if Councilmember Beach made her first meeting, I'll let you start. Anything that we would be on or?
I have no update. I just wanted to introduce myself, though, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
I'm Maria, longtime resident, Orno grad. My husband, my kids came. I'm a proud Orno community member and been very active in the community for a long time. I grew up in Long Lake, so have deep roots, I guess, in the community in general. Really appreciate the opportunity to serve. Sorry it was under, I was on vacation that everybody apparently knows about. Sorry about the unfortunate timing, but really appreciate it. And please, I hope that I'm approachable and that you can come reach out if you need to.
All right, how's Mayor Benson?
Thank you. Just to set expectations, this is going to be ten minutes, give or take. Last week was my first time attending the annual League of Minnesota Cities Conference. And over seven hundred elected officials and city staff from across the state gathered to hear from experts in a variety of fields. Common themes emerged. One was the importance of listening in our role as elected officials. Listening, we were told, though, isn't enough. It's essential to collaborate openly with the people we serve and create a shared vision for our community. This act of engaging is not isolated to one meeting or issue. It's ongoing. Serious discord has become a common fixture in our city council meetings. It flows into the community and causes harm to residents, staff, and to our relationships with neighboring cities. A lack of trust lies at the center of the subset. When residents do not trust the actions of their elected officials, the foundation of communal goodwill is eroded. As members of council, we are held accountable by the citizens we serve. While positive working relationships with fellow council members is ideal, it's my opinion that this cannot be prioritized at the expense of doing one's job. Serving in this role requires a willingness to speak openly about issues that impact our residents, even when doing so may not be viewed favorably by one's colleagues. I'm going to discuss several documents I've created that may help demonstrate why we as a council continue to grapple with issues of trust. Before I do, I want to mention that we are operating at a disadvantage when we discuss issues without an agreement on fundamental facts. For instance, according to my watch right now, it's seven oh six P M. You may have a different time on your watch or phone, but it's likely off by just a minute or two. Most likely, no one in Orno would look at the time now and see that it's mid-morning. If they did, they probably have a broken clock. It's important that when we discuss major issues, we talk about facts that we agree upon. If we're not able to do that, we approach challenges in ways that make them much more difficult to get our arms around. My documents are based in fact. Everything in the documents I've created was pulled from verifiable city records. These are not opinions, they are data. Rather than have staff project them on the screen, hard copies will be available at the end of the meeting. At the previous meeting, the mayor did not want this information shown. While I disagree with that decision, I will abide by it. These documents will also be part of the record as I have given copies to Adam Edwards, our city administrator. The first document relates to fire services. It's a simple timeline that covers the last five years of events related to the formation of an Orno fire department. The timeline highlights major decisions related to our city's progression, away from contracting fire service with the Long Lake Fire Department. The timeline highlights the lack of effort to inform and collaborate with citizens from the beginning of the process. It lists the publication date of every city newsletter and utility bill insert from the last few years. One mention of the Orno fire department was a few words in the G M U R E February newsletter from this year. The brief communication came after many consequential decisions, including ending the contract with Long Lake, purchasing equipment, and hiring a fire chief had been made. How do we, as elected officials, expect our community to trust our decisions when we do not invite them to the table at the outset? If we are certain that the direction we're taking is one that will benefit our community, why do we hesitate to broadcast it? Unfortunately, community engagement related to the formation of the Orno Fire Department came years after the decision to end our contract with Long Lake was made. This decision was made without input from citizens. Engagement came at the very end of the process and involved one public hearing and the invitation to write comments to the city. I'm going to address the comment cards, because many Orno residents took time to share their thoughts, concerns, and questions on those cards. This council has not discussed them. The comment cards were attached to the council packets for the May twenty-second and June twelfth meetings this year. They were not tabulated, and the public was given no opportunity to see results in an accessible format. If we as a council are going to solicit public feedback, then we have an obligation, not only to share it in a digestible way, but to utilize it. We've done neither. The second document I've created is a spreadsheet that organizes data from the comment cards. The spreadsheet distinguishes residents from non-residents and indicates the number of residents who support the formation of an Orno fire department, as well as those who do not or who question the necessity. A third category shows residents who wanted more information, questioned the process, or who requested that Orno and Long Lake work out a mutually agreeable solution. The numbers show that the residents of Orno overwhelmingly oppose the formation of an independent fire department, with sixty percent opposing and twenty-six percent in favor. Eleven percent are the third category I mentioned a moment ago, who are either under-informed or unhappy with the process. The data collected from our staff through our own process does not support the direction that we as a city are taking. Another way of putting it is, we have been spending money and discussed spending significantly more tonight to do the opposite of what our residents want. This is significant, and it is troubling. It is also troubling that this project undertaken by our city council has resulted in new legal action being taken against the city of Orno. On Friday, the city of Long Lake filed a suit with Hennepin County, asking a judge for an injunction to stop further actions related to fire service by the city of Orno. We are heading in a direction unfavorable with residents that will cost more, goes against nationwide trends, and may result in costly litigation. My final document details the progression of committee work. My final document details the progression of committee work on this council over the course of time. Committees are a place where staff and members of council meet to discuss city business. They are not subject to open meeting law because a quorum of council is not present. Part of the memo regarding the budget discussion tonight mentioned the fact that this is the second year that budget discussions have been taken into committee. In other words, two members of council are able to influence and shape the future direction outside of public meetings and without the input of other council members. The data included in my spreadsheet is taken entirely from public record and includes the last decade, as this was available on the Orno website. The data shows several trends with committee work on this council over time. Number one, committee assignments have been moved from the month of January to December. This means that newly elected members of council are not part of the process. Assignments are discussed and set before newly seated members have an opportunity to weigh in. Number two, the committee assignments also moved from a regular agenda item to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are not discussed and can be passed in one vote. Number three, the number of committees has increased over time. Among others, we currently have committees for budget, code review, fire negotiating, parks, and the newly formed legal committee that was created last month. The legal committee was created at the end of a regular council meeting. It was not on a regular agenda and was not recommended by staff. Its stated purpose is for two members of council to meet with the city attorney privately, apart from council, to discuss legal strategy. Number four, the final point of note is that the mayor sits on every committee related to fire services, code review, budget, communications, parks, and legal. This is a lot of information to digest. The intention is to lend increased transparency to the workings of this council to demonstrate how seriously I take the trust that has been placed in me as one of its members. Some may have the opinion that elected officials were elected for a reason and we, citizens, need to let them do their job. To this, I ask, what expectations do we have for our healthcare providers? Educators, financial advisors, or home improvement professionals? Would we allow our healthcare or financial matters to be managed by others with no expectation that we be kept in the loop about major decisions? City government is no different. Residents have the right to hold elected officials to the same high standard expected of others whom they entrust with their most valued assets. I have one final item. I thank each candidate who interviewed for the open council seat. The time and effort put into the process was significant, and I enjoyed meeting each of the candidates and learning about how they would contribute to our city. That's all I have, thank you.
So, a couple things here. You know, if, it would be very helpful for somebody who downloaded a lot of information there, you know, to have that put into our agenda. I mean, you dealt with a lot of different issues. There were numerous things that, you know, I would like to discuss because it's inconsistent with the facts as I know them. But I look at committees in a different way. And the public has to be clear, because I didn't get this from the statements, is that committees don't make decisions, committees make recommendations. And so, you know, the meeting laws, you know, you only can have two council members together, otherwise it has to be publicized and it has to be a meeting, so you have committees. And the purposes of committees is to make recommendations. And so, those recommendations come to the council to get voted on. Whatever transparency someone's afraid is missing from those can be brought up in the item itself. So, we make a recommendation, goes to the city council, the city council puts it on an agenda. Yes, it can go on a consent agenda, but I wouldn't want to mislead you and let you think that things on the consent agenda aren't reviewed. It's a responsibility of every city council member prior to the meeting to review consent agenda items. So we go, we read them, we do our research, we might talk to staff, we might watch the planning commission meeting. And if we can't get our questions answered, then we will pull it off the agenda. And this council, which I think is really interesting that we do it and Long Lake doesn't do it, I was at their meeting. If something's on consent agenda, they invite the public to remove it. There's other municipalities that, once they're on the consent agenda, those items, they don't invite anyone to remove them. At every meeting, we invite the public or a member of the city council to remove an agenda item. Therefore, we can discuss them in further detail. So, that was another point that was brought up. I am in favor of removing the mayor from some of the committees, because he does have a full plate. And with now council member Beach on, I would like to make a motion to put her on the fire committee and the negotiation commission.
Fire advisor.
Fire advisor. And then put her in that spot. I think, my opinion on this is accurate. I think there's other, there's people that want to see more communication with Long Lake, particularly with respect to the fire department and how we move forward. I can tell you that I personally have reached out to Long Lake to initiate some additional conversations. Where I left it on the negotiation committee was that after we made our decision, we would resume our negotiation and conversations. We did receive a lawsuit from them, so they're hesitant to engage us. At least that's the latest word from Long Lake, at least from their mayor. I reached out to the other negotiation member, too. So I would like to continue to work forward, because no matter what, if we're two separate departments or we find a way to maintain the relationship, we have a lot to discuss, keeping in mind, we own 85% of that equipment. And we, some of the equipment, including on Janesport 20, engine 21, we own 100%. So there's a lot of conversations that needed to happen, can all be about negotiations, potentially not, but we have a lot to work through. So, we're gonna have, in our motion there, staff is gonna reach out and discuss the vehicle piece. But we've also given staff permission to engage their city's staff over there and see what solutions they can come up with. So, I went on beyond my motion, but I did make a motion to, if you'll...
I'll second that.
Could you ask?
You have to get that discussion.
Could I ask just clarification on your motion? You mentioned adding council member Beach to the fire negotiating committee and the fire advisory board. Each of those has two council members, so who?
Richard's on the one and Matt's on the other one.
What name?
Replacing me.
Replacing the mayor, that was my question.
Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
With you, so that was my motion. Seconded?
I seconded.
And there's some discussion?
Well, I'd like to just point out that this is, it's an unfortunate habit that's become clear that this wasn't on the agenda and now during mayor council, we're making a motion. And I know, being briefed as we all work with staff, that this is not the ideal way to do city businesses during mayor council, making motions. It's not preferred by staff, it's not agendaized, and I don't think it's the right thing to do.
And do you have any issue about the motion that's been made?
My only issue is what I would see, and I did mention this earlier, that out of all the committees I talked about, I'm on none of them.
One of the things you brought up was that you felt that Danny was on too many committees. So Matt brought up a solution to that.
Sure.
And if you're bringing up a problem, you bring up a solution, that's why he made a motion.
That's like, why can't this be? This isn't something I was prepared to discuss at this moment, because for a mayor council, which is about shareouts, this is not a regular item. In my opinion, this would be better served to be a regular item and not at the end of the meeting, because this has happened.
Here, we appreciate the opinion, but we do have a motion at the table.
Let her talk.
A motion at the table.
My opinion?
Can the public stay quiet while we're talking at the council? I would appreciate that, I would appreciate that, yes.
Got it, boss.
So you're making a motion to appoint council member Beach to both fire negotiating and fire advisory?
Yes.
I don't support it, no.
Okay, long favor say aye.
Well, I'm sorry, I would like some discussion.
Oh, okay.
One, I would like to know why. I guess, like last time, I tried to reach out, obviously, and you said you'd want to do it publicly, so...
I do, yeah, again, this is...
I would love to know now, I guess.
No, it is good to know. I don't know if you knew about this motion ahead of time before, or if you're being just as surprised by this as I am.
I'm under the, I'm just learning everything here, and I'm just learning the committees and by the committees that I've been appointed, I would agree, if I take on one, I don't know how this works, but I would certainly like to drop one, if that works. And I do think I should...
So what's new with the one, I think you had a question for, and so why she's not comfortable with you on the fire advisory, fire negotiating?
I know, I reached out, and I think you know, because you were with Charlie, that I reached out to Charlie, trying to meet him last week, and reached out to John, and John and Charlie both met me, or separately, but agreed to meet, and I ended up meeting just John. But I do feel like with my history with some stuff, that that is something that I think I could add a unique perspective to. But I would, of the ones that I'm on, I guess I would like to, if I had to make a separate motion, put this in discussion.
Well, we had to finish the first motion, and now we're going to use the second motion.
I think it would be a fair and right thing to do. Like I said, I did mention this earlier, but I'm on none of these committees to at least appoint me to one of them, the fire-related, whatever it be.
That's a decision of the council.
I'm telling you why I don't support this motion, because it's...
So it's not me specifically?
It, I think it's not a fair balance, sure, that's what I would say.
But not me specifically, you have no concerns?
I think there's certainly the same thing that we, that I talked to you about during the interview process, the potential or the optics of conflict with being a fire wife and doing the negotiating. So that is something, but I think, at the very least, it would be very much appreciated to have a balance there with these two committees and allow another member of council, who currently serves on none of these, to serve on one, related to fire. That's my impression.
Understood.
Long favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold it?
No.
Okay, go ahead, pass this forward.
Go figure.
Can I make, can I make a motion to give up one?
Yeah, well, how about, which one would you like to give?
Or you can make that motion at the next meeting, if you want.
Wouldn't it be better to discuss?
I thought the council decided.
Okay, I'll, you'll listen, I'm sorry.
Okay, council member Johnson, do you have a further mayor council report stuff?
There is some question out in the bubble, just a raiser. She was, council member Beach was just saying, if I pick out two committees, I would like to relieve myself of one. And she doesn't have to do that at this second, she can...
I'd like to add it to the agenda next time?
Yeah.
That's allowed?
Yes, you can. So there isn't any real confusion, it's just added her to these ones, she'd like to change her load. And that, my top hand.
House Speaker Crosby.
The woman who thanked the fire department for their service, I appreciate that. Great time to be serving the fire department for 10 years. I think there's a misunderstanding in the rush pumper rescue. I don't think council member Benson had a full understanding of it. It's a rescue truck that can also take your bus fires, but its primarily purpose is medicals. I think it's important to have somebody with more intimate fire knowledge when you're on these committees regarding fire, it's extremely helpful. As far as the quorum is concerned, I think it's important for our residents to have the quorum in the audience, have respect for each other. It's important that we show respect for each other up here. It's not an easy job doing this and being attacked and being attacked personally. You know, there's lawsuits in the city, but when you look at them, there's been lawsuits going back 20-plus years from some people. We can't respond simply because we get a lawsuit, because it'll never end. That's a problem. I had somebody last, at the last meeting, discuss what we really need to do as a city is go to Minneapolis and look at the study for trees with the Met Council. Well, the interesting thing is, this is Orno, we're not Long Lake. We work for the citizens of Orno. So it's up to this council to do what's best for the citizens of Orno. Because with the logic that's being presented, we should be turning over the police department to Long Lake and let them run that, too. Because the budget, we pay 85 to 90% of the budget. That's why this is under discussion. And this isn't just a discussion that's been happening over months. We've been doing this for years. And the non-responsive side has been the city of Long Lake, not Orno. We gave them very good alternatives, very good options, they declined. Now, if we turn our back on our oath and decide to do what we think is in the best interest of the city of Long Lake, we're not doing our jobs. The citizens of Orno are the people that voted us into office. Those are the people we're responsible for. And when people discuss the fire budget, ladies and gentlemen, we are the fire budget. These are the facts. I spent a lot of time in the department. I understand when the chief was presenting call percentages and so forth, all of that information. Somebody pointed out, what if somebody dies? Well, people have died, when it was Long Lake Fire. So to bring something of that nature up is in poor taste. That is not acceptable. Victims die, regardless of who's at the helm, victims unfortunately will die. I was with some of them. So to bring up people dying is not in very good taste.
Absolutely.
What I'm just saying is, your communication, from our perspective, to the citizens, will improve. That needs to get better. Do I agree with you? 100%, yes. Our words need to get out to have citizens understand the approach, why we're doing it, the budget, and so forth. All of that is completely 100% correct. That needs to be improved. And I think this council will do that. We've always engaged people if they have questions and they have comments, if they handle themselves in a polite manner, without cursing or cursing at other citizens of our city. We've handled them with respecting kindness, even people that haven't. But unfortunately, when the public comments get out of hand, and they've been very much in hand tonight, which is great, and that's mostly because there's a camera present.
There's always a camera.
So, when that happens, things go smoothly. But it's a different story with a camera here tonight compared to last time. And yes, that was filmed, it just was not necessarily filmed by the user. So I would say that... So I would say to everybody, yes, your expectation on more information, completely a hundred percent warranted. Absolutely. And we will be getting you that as soon as possible on a timely basis. I'm very okay with that, I think that's important to make sure everybody is understanding of our approach and where we're going with this. The knowledge of fire is extremely important. We hired a great fire chief to run this department. Do we still want to have open negotiations with the city of Long Lake? Absolutely. Do I want to erase the history of the department that I worked for? No, I don't. I don't. Those people I consider as my family. So I think Matt's intention is not to do that, but a lot of those things rely on the other side. So what I'm saying is, people that have been coming to the citizens of Orno, how many times have you gone to Long Lake to talk to them about their approach and coming to a middle ground with us? And I haven't seen, when you compare this to the police contract of years ago, when they walked away from Orno PD, there was zero upheaval. And you know something? Their quality of service went down, their response time went down, and their citizens aren't served enough. When they walked away from Orno PD, that was the ramification, there was zero outrage, zero. And we didn't sit there and attack them, we didn't sit there as a council and write letters to their citizens trying to disparage them. We took it as a business decision. That's how we're taking this. Appreciate all the time and people who reframed. Have a great evening, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, well, facts are a funny thing. Councilmember Vincent, you can twist the facts to mean into propaganda, that's what's going on. We talk about comment cards, you have a hundred comment cards, and you try and say that sixty percent of Orno does a lot of new fire. You have a hundred cards out of eight thousand people, and they're not even all residents. And I've had a whole bunch of residents tell me they're scared you can put a comment card in because there's people that might target them.
You?
Because they support exactly what we're doing. So facts have a funny thing. So, a lot of half truths, a lot of innuendo, and a lot of no truths. So let's talk about a couple of facts. Let's look at this lawsuit. There's a, let's talk about the facts and innuendo. Let's talk about James. Did we take James? We didn't take James. We put out a knock bids for whom wanted to come and be our fire chief, and we had great candidates. We had actually fabulous candidates. And we attract fabulous candidates because we have the budget to do everything, we do everything right. And in the end, James put his name in the hat, we interviewed him. And he obviously had a leg up because he has all the information, we have a lot of respect for him. Even James said he knows the future of fire goes through Orno, he wants to be part of it. So we didn't take James. About the ladder truck, we didn't. Orno, Long Lake never wanted the ladder truck. They knew about the ladder truck, they didn't want it, so we want it. It's only after the fact that they want to recreate history and say that we wanted it and they took it. It's absolutely not the truth. More innuendo, half truths, and no truths. How about handering service? Well, let's look at Maun just as an example, or Minnetoka Beach as an example. You know, they had Maun doing their firework for, I don't know how many decades. If you take Maun's fire, where their fire, their fire station is, go to the middle of Minnetoka Beach, it's a seven to nine minute drive time. You take Station One in Willow, it's a seven to nine minute drive time, it's the same. So, by saying you don't have Station Two, even Station Two didn't exist, it's the same time. Maun didn't leave because of the response time. Or, I'm saying Minnetoka Beach didn't leave Maun because of response time, they left because of money, because we did it for half the price. So the price, so handering service is not an issue. Firefighters, they say we're to take their firefighters. You know what? We're not taking anybody again, we're putting out there to say who wants to come and apply. And even today, there's people out in Long Lake Fire who work for other fire departments. They can do that with us too. They can work at both. It's, we're not taking anybody. It's again, half truths, no truths, and innuendo. Pensions, that's a whole other innuendo and no truth. The only reason we went to the legislature is to give the firefighters an opportunity to keep their pensions whole if, if they wanted to move them over. It was only for their benefit. Long Lake does not control or own the money. Orno does not control all the money. The Fire Relief Association manages the money, and it's the state's money, has nothing to do with the city's. It's strictly giving them the opportunity to keep everything whole if they want to move over, it's for their benefit only. So saying that we're taking the pension from Long Lake is, again, a complete no truth. You know, probably the most reasonable person we've dealt with probably in the Long Lake City Council is John Dykman. He's been willing to talk, I know Maria met with him, had good dialogue before this lawsuit, and he was of the opinion too that, you know, it's, we should just jump to lawyers, we should have a conversation, we can get to a point that we can make it work, because we know the contract's sending, he's pretty reasonable. But it's funny how that thing, when they have those conversations at their own council meeting, because there's been some leaks of the information that's been in their secret meetings, their closed sessions, where they're calling in the trader in those meetings because he wants to have a discussion with us. So that's the kind of stuff we have to work with, is when somebody's calling their own council members traders because they want to have conversations with us from a reasonable standpoint. I met with him on the fire advisory committee also before we made our decision this last time, and even told him, most likely we're going in that direction, but we'd love to sit down with you right after, have whatever conversation we get. Our hand is always out. It's always out regardless of how you treat us, regardless of what you've said in the newspaper about us. Like the mayor said, that he doesn't trust us to do any services for Long Lake. That probably was not a helpful thing to put in the newspaper. But we're still there because we uphold our duty, not only for our own citizens, but then to the next wave of people out, because we do police service for a number of cities, we do public works for a number of cities, and we're the backup on lots of different things for water, and so we're all over the place. So we are out there all the time. If I was the Long Lake's resident, there'd be a few things I'd be asking my council right now. I would wonder, when they made a decision to hire a public relations company that has to put out their notices? Usually a common sense tells me if you got to hire a public relations company and put out your notices, you probably got a bad, a bad message, it isn't working very well, you got to put lipstick on a pig. So where is that decision made? How much money are they spending on paying our agency? Does Long Lake residents know they bought the land next to the fire department for two-hundred-some-thousand? When was, but what other residents even know that? They're spending money like it's flying out the window. The legal cost to sue, did they talk about what the ramifications are of having to, to the cost of a lawsuit, and to what end? The contract's coming up either way. Have they talked about their budget, and what their real budget is going to be when they're by themselves or have to get somebody else to do their firework? Have they told the Long Lake residents that they've made a deal, a handshake deal with Loretto Fire? Do they tell anybody what that cost is? Who's making handshake deals in the dark? There's a lot of, if I was Long Lake, I'd be asking a lot of questions, because all of our stuff is public, all the office room, everything else. So with that, I'm going to end with a couple quotes. First one's by Albert Einstein. "The difference between stupidity and genius is that genius has its limits." The second one is by Muhammad Ghani. Says, "Speak only if it improves the silence." So with that, I'm going to close the meeting, and we're going to go to closed session. This meeting will be closed as permitted by the Attorney Client Privilege, Section thirteen D. point five, subdivision three D. to discuss litigation strategy regarding the city of Long Lake versus the city of Orno. We'll take a five-minute break as we need to clear the rooms and resume closed session. Thank you everybody for coming.
Are you adjourning the meeting this time? Is there going to be another meeting after?
Second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, long in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we've closed the meeting, we have not adjourned the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting after the closed session is over.
So there'll be another meeting after the closed session?
Well, we have to reopen the meeting before we can adjourn.
I see.
It's a process that we have to do. But you don't get to be in here during the closed session. That's how that works, too.
Is that how that works?
It is.
Thanks for pointing that out. You might want a PR firm, you might want to hire a PR firm there. Speaking of messaging. Speaking of distasteful.